Okay, welcome. This is Cleveland Heights City Council regular meeting. It is Monday, October 21st at 7:30 PM. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh. Russell.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
All right, Councilman Posh is excused. Item number four, amendments to the agenda. I'd like to reserve that for possibly later because we do have a presentation that we're coordinating with another city at 8:00 PM. So we might move some things around depending on how long the other items up until item number 10 on the agenda. So I'm going to move to approve the minutes from the previous meetings of September 3rd and September 9th. Were there any amendments to those? Okay, then we'll just move along to communications from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to make a matter of record. Inform council that sealed bids were received on October 8th, 2024, for project number 2408, sanitary sewer pipe repair project, Phase 1. Three companies submitted bids, and Fabrizi Trucking and Paving submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $2,44,599.29. Sorry, $0.21. Just wanted to make that a matter of record. And second, I'd like to inform council and give council a heads up that the Archer Study on wages and salaries for our non-vargaining unit employees is nearing completion. We expect to have one more administrative meeting this month before presenting council with a revision of the wage and salary ordinance for council's discussion and consideration. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City administrators' report.
Good evening, Council President Kuta and members of council, Mayor Sarin. Time to just have a brief update on a few key projects that over the coming months should have a significant impact on public safety throughout the city and improve parking accessibility in several of our business districts. The first has to do with the deployment of our camera system. According to IT Director Ryan Prosser, we're in the process of replacing, upgrading, and adding to our surveillance camera system throughout the city. Approximately 200 or so cameras will eventually be installed, 75 of which have been deployed to date. Installations began here in what about two dozen in and around City Hall. City Hall was selected because that's where the servers are located to facilitate the entire network. The schedule of future deployments is being guided by constituent traffic volume and other factors. Police Chief Britton indicates that these cameras play a vital role in investigating and solving crimes. The cameras around City Hall, for example, assisted in the identification of a female connected to a grand theft, as well as an individual tampering with an officer's personal vehicle. According to Police Captain Young, the newly installed cameras in Cumberland Park assisted in the identification of a suspect vehicle and those involved in a shooting in the park over the summertime. The, while it's premature to draw causal connections, Captain Young indicates that since the installation of the cameras in Cumberland Park, there have been no notable incidents word gets around. Second one has to do with the Coventry parking structure. On October 16th, just last week, GPD group completed and submitted a fee proposal for the renovation of the Coventry parking garage and elevator. The project's scope includes replacement of the elevator with a traction-type elevator, if possible, or a hydraulic elevator that includes appropriate COVID-19 mitigation and prevention measures. It also calls for replacement of the elevator roof, and shall include all mechanical, electrical, HVAC, and data penetrations. The proposed budget for the project is about $270,000. GPD services generally include preparation of preliminary design narratives, drawings, and specs, advertising for bidding, conducting a pre-bid meeting, and answering, addressing all questions during the bidding process with written responses communicated to all bidders. The project completion date, projected completion date is the end of September 2025. Full GPD proposal is currently under staff review. If you've had occasion to drive down Lennox in the last few weeks, you'll notice that the garage repairs have begun. They began at the end of September. Estimated time of completion, barring any unforeseen circumstances, is the end of this year. Cedar Lee Parking Structure, according to Tom Fadanza of Parks and Recreation, the elevator in this structure has been problematic for a number of years. The current issue that prevents the elevator from operating properly, apparently it can go up to the fourth floor. If it can't get to the fifth floor, if it gets there somehow, it just shuts down the whole system. The problem seems to be water damage to the motherboard. Quotes have been obtained, and it's anticipated that a replacement motherboard should be in place within six to eight weeks. In addition, according to Mr. Fadanza, quotes have been obtained for pressure washing and sealing the entire parking facility, as well as for regular maintenance, all of which should be submitted and approved as appropriate and implemented by the year, end of the year. That concludes my report. Any questions?
All right, go ahead.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for the update. I really appreciate it. So I think that you said that the work on the Lennox Street Garage should be done by the end of this year. Do we think that it will be able to open right after that work is completed, or do we anticipate any sort of delay there?
Don't anticipate any further delay.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? I have one. So back to the Coventry Garage. I know we allocated $500,000 in ARPA funds for that. Is that what the elevator repair is coming out of?
My understanding is that most, if not all, of the expenses are from ARPA funding.
And are we doing any other planned renovations besides the elevator at the Coventry Parking Garage?
My understanding is that the main additional is the maintenance, regular maintenance, and that's being discussed at this point.
Well, I hope the stairs and the facade and the kind of entrance get addressed as well. I know that, you know, that everything can't be done, but, you know, we want, we want that to look nice, and it's a little bit of an eyesore now.
I know the director is very interested in making this as serviceable and user-friendly as possible.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you. And I'm sorry I didn't say your name. I just said city administrator. This is Danny Williams, our city administrator. Thank you. All right. So I'm going to make a motion that we move, so we have a, we have a presentation at 8:00 with another city. As I said, they're going to show us the Dome Brook Reservoir Restoration. And I guess my motion would be to move the one public comment up to now? Is that okay? Any discussion on that?
Yeah, we have four, actually, by the way, but...
Are we moving the department reports and the report of council? I just, I didn't, right now we're at 8:00.
You know what? I don't think we have any department reports.
That's all I was wondering.
Yeah. Is there a second for that or any discussion? I certainly...
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Just, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so Eddie, why don't you have the, you said there's four?
Yeah.
So we're going to listen to a public comment. This is for agenda items only. We always do this first, and then eventually we will do, we'll get to everybody who's here. And for those of you who haven't been here before, we have three minutes. When you speak, you come up to the microphone, just say your name and your street you live on. Go ahead.
Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you. This is concerning the resolution before you affirming Cleveland Heights as a safe haven for trans and gender diverse people obtaining gender-affirming health care. Now, you've got a lot of grief here in this room that needs to be heard, so I'll keep my remarks short. First, I want to thank Harley Rubin for bringing this forward. This is absolutely essential. I know what it's like to question my gender identity before we even had that term. I know what it's like to feel that the world is hostile and to think about killing myself because I couldn't find a place for myself in this world. That was long before a political party decided to weaponize transphobia and put a target on the back of every trans person in this country and their families. We have people being refugees now from Ohio because they are afraid of losing gender-affirming health care. This is, this is beyond horrific. The suicide ideation rate now among young trans and gender diverse people is skyrocketing because of this deliberate weaponization of transphobia on the behalf of a political party, not just, not just Anita Bryant, but a whole political party is putting a target on the backs of young people everywhere. So this is very important. It doesn't solve the whole problem, but it's a step forward, making Cleveland Heights a safe haven for everybody. Obviously, we've still a long way to go on that, but this is a move in that direction. So again, thank you to Harley Rubin for bringing this forward. I know you're going to have a second reading. We'll make more remarks then. Thank you.
Harley Rubin.
Hi. You might have seen me a few weeks ago. I'm Harley Rubin. I talked to Gail about this and proposed it with her guidance and meeting with her a few times. So thank you so much for proposing this resolution. I really appreciate it. I really think that this is a time where we not only need the steps of small, little communities like this, but of us all to advocate on every level for changes to, to make sure that the places that we live in and the communities we belong in are safe for everyone, including trans people. Over the weekend, there was the LGBT Center of Greater Cleveland released a report on the, how Ohioans, LGBTQ Ohioans are doing, with a report that was a survey with about 1,600 participants, and 48% said that they did not feel like they were accepted in society. And so I just wanted to say, like, you know, almost half of us who are queer in Ohio don't feel like we belong here, don't feel like we are seen, and this has been a move on your part that is bringing us closer, closer to that once you pass it. But I also would say that holding public office in a, like, liberal space like this doesn't mean that that's like kind of the end of your responsibility and to advocate on further levels. This is a really, really rough time when we're seeing ads constantly that are targeting us and attacking us. And the reason that I proposed this was not only because I thought that it might be a good way to get started with a campaign for sanctuary cities, but also because I want trans youth everywhere in Ohio and abroad and all over the country to know that they're not alone and to know that there are people fighting for them everywhere. This is something I just don't really see. I know that, you know, me and my community are out here, but it's really, really hard when you're the only queer person you know. So thank you so much.
Anna Pawaski.
Hi. I'm also here speaking on the safe haven resolution before you. And I also want to keep my remarks very brief, so I'm going to skip like the entire first half of what I wrote and say that the aspect of the safe haven resolution that I appreciate the most is the deprioritization of enforcement of laws which seek to punish those seeking and providing gender-affirming care, and I hope to see this work in the following ways. First, the inevitable pressure for enforcement with, which the county and state may argue are required by law should be Cleveland Heights's lowest priority, and regular reminders of this resolution's mandate should be made to prosecutors, public attorneys, and the Cleveland Heights Police Department. The police should also be encouraged to pass a similar resolution protecting gender-affirming care because they're the ones that will be enforcing the resolution. Cleveland Heights should be defiant and pay attention to neighboring jurisdictions who may prioritize the enforcement of gender-affirming care bans. Other cities will not openly publicize this information, but their residents and Cleveland Heights residents will be at risk in nearby jurisdictions of having their health care taken away or otherwise weaponized against them, and the city can educate the greater community on its safe haven status. Lastly, while Cleveland Heights is mighty, it is also small when compared to the greater Cleveland area. It is important that massive institutions like the Cleveland Clinic are affected by such resolutions, and therefore these resolutions need to be passed across many municipalities as possible. So talking to your fellow legislators is a great way to start that journey. And though I myself am not trans, I have family members who are trans and who live, who have lived in Cleveland Heights and are in the surrounding areas. So it is very important, not just for you guys, but for the greater, the greater community that Cleveland Heights is a safe haven for trans people. Thank you.
Sidney Negron. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
Hi. My name is Sidney Negron. I'm a local resident, and I'm here today to speak in favor of the trans safe haven resolution. So I'm currently a resident of Cleveland, but I will be moving to Cleveland Heights when my lease is up. And at the beginning of January, when my health insurance plan changes, all of my gender-affirming care will be coming through the Metro Health Branch that is in your city. So all of my care, from picking up my hormones, seeing my primary care physician who manages them, to having follow-up procedures from the surgery that I had earlier this year, all of that is going to go through your city. But all of that assumes that these are not going to be banned at the state level, which I believe we all know has been a significant risk for trans people in this state. We're all being inundated by the attack ads that have been going on recently. And earlier this year, I, along with many others, you know, the people I'm here with, were forced with Governor Dewine's proposed administrative rules, which initially restricted things for adults and did place significant restrictions on minors, were forced to start making plans to seek care out of state. So the resolution that has been introduced here would help to ensure that moving forward, myself and other trans people, not only in Cleveland Heights, but in the greater Cleveland area, are able to continue accessing our regular health care. I'm a recent graduate from Case Western Reserve University, and during my time there, I studied LGBT history in Greater Cleveland under Dr. John Grabowski. And Cleveland Heights, historically, has actually led the greater Cleveland area in passing LGBT civil rights protections. So in 2002, this city council voted to approve a domestic partnership resolution that would allow partners to receive employee benefits. The next fall, Cleveland Heights voters then approved a domestic partnership resolution for all unmarried couples in the city. The city of Cleveland and then Cuyahoga County followed several years later. So you have a chance, again, with this resolution to lead this area. Similar safe haven resolutions, which deprioritize the enforcement of laws seeking to punish the provision of gender-affirming care, have been passed in Cincinnati just last year and are also being introduced in other Ohio cities. So one is currently in the works in Akron, and there are plans to introduce this in Lakewood and also the city of Cleveland. So I want to thank you for the support you've expressed for this, encourage you to, you know, do everything you can to support this in the strongest terms. Thank you again.
Okay. Again, we have a presentation that's going to be via Zoom at 8:00. I'd be fine with, I know there might be some people who want to speak on behalf of Christian now. If you, if there's somebody who, because the, you know, it's, the presentation's going to go from about 8:00, 8:30, but if there's anybody who would like to speak now, maybe who has to leave early or doesn't really want to wait, would you raise your hand? Eddie, could we recognize?
Yeah, I just need a name.
We signed up, though.
Right, right. Understood.
I don't know who is who.
Yeah. Yeah, just say who you are.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I got it. My name is Sarah K. Thomas Peterson. I am Christian, Christian's aunt, Pharaoh's sister. We are lifelong residents of Cleveland Heights. I went to Milligan, Bellevue, Wiley, Monticello, and graduated on the steps of Severance Hall in 2005. Christian was taken from us on your watch. Since then, you all have been here legislating on policies and programs that a lifelong resident of your city, a youth, will never see or benefit from. Legislating, while we still do not have the transparency that your city clearly pretentiously, clearly disingenuously offered, at minimum, there could have been a public legislative review started about why your city's current policies, not ones from the future, but current ones, tax and grant funded, so there are stakeholders involved, did not save my nephew's life. How, as a community, are we supposed to trust your city, my family's home, likely longer than yours, or the police officers that took Christian? How are we supposed to trust you all with our most vulnerable citizens? This new distrust is not only due to the actions that night, but also the lack of information shared with the family and the community. The use of lethal force against a youth, especially one of color experiencing a mental health emergency, that you have funding and training to help, raises serious concerns for all of your constituents, not just our family. There has been no update from BCI, no access to all of your officers' reports. We still do not have every body cam of every officer. We still do not have, or still do not know why there was no CIT officer there, especially given that Christian was only a danger to himself. Nor do we have access to the personnel files of the officers who took Christian from our family. We also have not been informed of why Cleveland Heights Police were in my brother's home and investigating the scene that night despite touting to the community that they called BCI. That's what you all said, that you all did it and followed standard and ethical protocols. The community deserves to know the full details of what transpired. We need to understand the circumstances that led to that tragedy and why we are still here fighting for justice in lieu of planning our next monthly family night. Transparency is not just a request, it is a necessity. It is the foundation upon which trust between the community and law enforcement is built. Without it, we are here left grieving a child full of suspicion, fear, and anger. These emotions are, and behavioral drivers that, that will impact your and the mayor's job security as elected representatives. Emotions that will be heard and, more importantly, used as a motivation to seek justice through whatever legal process is available to us. Your city stole a part of our family's legacy. We want your next actions to reflect the magnitude of that. He was ours. We want your, a life despite the narrative that your department is trying to push that was full of potential and promise, that was cut short at his most vulnerable. You took a young person who loved, who was loved and cherished, a funny and loving boy who will be missed by many, so fought for by many, as you can plainly see today. You all took our home. You took our home, our pride of place, our sense of safety in a place we always felt safe for the last 45 years. People in your employ have replaced a sense of home and belongingness with trauma, despair, and the feeling of being otherized. Moreover, we urge the city council to implement measures that will prevent such tragedies in the future. This includes better training for police officers, particularly in de-escalation techniques, and the establishment of a civilian oversight board to review incidents involving the use of force. While I'm in the thick of my grief for Christian, I now fear for the lives of my friends, my former teachers, my neighbors, and all of their children. So while your duties may come secondary to preserving your legacy, my duty as a citizen to advocate for the safety of others will not come secondary to my grief. We will be here, we will be heard, and I will continue to protect my nephew's humanity and dignity from the dangers of your city's unethical behavior. We need you to stand with us, our call for transparency and justice. We need you to show that every life in your community is valued and that Christian's life mattered. I have copies for you all, as well as the reflection statements from the funeral, since none of you all showed up, as well as his obituary, so you can get to know him better, and our family, who's lived here, like I said, probably longer than all of you have.
Thank you, first.
No justice.
No peace. No peace. You will not get peace until there is justice for this family. Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt. We are ready on Zoom, just so you know.
Can you, we have a, unfortunately, I know this is really bad timing, but we have a presentation that we're coordinated with another city. We'll have all of you speak as soon as the presentation's over.
But that's 30 minutes.
Yes, it is. Sorry.
But, but we've signed up first.
I understand.
We were the first one to sign, and you let other people go before us.
I understand. This is, was all pre-planned, including the policy that we let people speak on agenda items first. Trust me, this was, this was not ideal. We know that. But we did coordinate this with another city weeks ago. So I promise you, we'll have, we'll hear from everybody.
But sir...
Very, very important.
This young man got killed by one of your officers.
I understand.
And this is, and this is critical, and I get it that you have business, but they have business of justice. They want justice for their loved ones. And at the end of the day, we came in here and signed up first, and you let other people go in front of us, and to me, I think that was intentional.
Honestly, it wasn't. We always put, and I can show you the agenda, we always put agenda items...
But we, but we signed up first for public comment, thinking that you would have it be first.
So just so you know, we divide public comment into two sections. One is for legislation that's being passed or voted on tonight, and then second is general public comment that's not on the legislative agenda. So we're going to do, we're going to do this as quickly as we can.
Okay.
We're going to hear everybody.
All right.
Thank you, and I do appreciate your patience.
Is COTW?
Nice job tonight, Matt Charver on the Lower Lake.
Thanks, Mayor.
I don't know.
A lot of information packed into that PowerPoint.
Yes.
That's good, and it's recorded, so folks can revisit and keep themselves fresh in understanding the issues. So it's good. Appreciate that.
I'm trying to figure out how to, I don't know why Eddie doesn't have the link, because it's right on our website.
We can see you guys. I can't see myself, though.
See if I could send that to her.
I don't know if we're on.
Can you hear us?
Just do this.
Hey, Jerry, I just got a note from Eddie saying that they're in the meeting, but they're not seeing themselves on the screen yet.
Can you ask her what they're, what she's logged in as?
Sure.
Is she COTW? Maybe that's Council of something. Thank you. Although she has my cell, I thought she would text me, too.
Yeah, it could be Council of the Whole, right? COTW?
Yeah.
I'm guessing, but let me wait to see if she responds. Yeah, I think that's right. COTW.
Okay.
Jerry, Anna?
Can you guys hear us now?
Can you guys hear us now?
Sir, please, let us try to fix this technical problem. And faster we do it, the faster we get done with it.
Recording in progress.
We just came out of executive session, and we are now entering our work session at 8 o'clock on Monday, October 21st, 2024. We have one topic for our work session tonight, and that is an update on the design of the amenities for the work that's being done at the Horseshoe Lake Park. I should mention that we have a number of people from the sewer district, so we welcome all of you. And I'd also like to welcome our friends and colleagues on City Council in Cleveland Heights.
They're coming back on right now.
Oh.
They dropped off. They should be coming back on right now.
Sir, please, please, we're, I know, we're on it. You've not been recognized. Please let us finish.
Recording in progress.
COTW. Oh, no? Oh, they have me here.
COTW.
Not quite sure.
Can you guys hear us now? Are you guys able to hear us?
We can hear you, but you look like me.
That's.
Oh, wait.
That's because they have it on view.
Oh, they declined. You declined to be promoted. Okay.
They have it on speaker view. No, they're there. Cleveland Heights is there, but they have it set up for speaker view.
Oh, okay.
You're seeing your screen as whoever's speaking shows up on the screen. So if Cleveland Heights wants to have their council show, then they need to change it.
Okay.
To a different view.
To the gallery view, Bill? Is that?
Gallery view would let them see everyone, yeah. And they would just be one square.
Did you get that, Addie? Tell her, tell her to use gallery view. If they're working.
There we go.
Can you guys hear us okay? We're good to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, so I was just welcoming everyone and indicating that we were, Shaker Heights City Council had been in executive session, is now going into the work session on one topic, which is an update on the design of amenities for the Horseshoe Lake Park area. And we wanted to thank our friends at the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for joining us, as we have a number of people from the sewer district. And we wanted to welcome our friends and colleagues at Cleveland Heights City Council and others that may be attending as well. We thought we would this evening start with the presentation from the sewer district with an update on the work that's been done to date on the park amenities. And then we will take some turns asking questions by Council, by Shaker City Council and Cleveland Heights City Council. I think it's not anticipated that any formal action will be taken tonight. This is purely educational and an opportunity for City Council in particular to ask questions of the sewer district and their consultants that have been working closely on this project. So with that, I will turn it over to who? Matt or?
Sure, Mayor, I'll take it from here. Mayor, thanks for having us this evening. Members of the Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights Council, appreciate the opportunity. We're gonna provide a presentation tonight as we approach the 60% design completion. And I'm gonna hand it over to Matt Lang and Glenn Valentine with the Stimson Group, who are part of our external consulting team that are working on the design effort. So Matt, if you want to go ahead and lead us in the presentation, we'll be happy to take questions.
Sure, thanks, Matt. Good evening, everyone. Like Matt said, my name's Matt Lang, landscape architect at Stimson and project manager for the design team. And I'm here with Glenn Valentine and Yvonne Valente from the GPD Group, who's a consultant on the team as well. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, and we can get into the details of the presentation here. Let me know if that shows up okay for everyone.
We can see it, Matt. If you can enlarge it, if at all possible, would probably be helpful.
Okay. It looks like it's full screen on my screen, Mayor Weiss.
Okay.
That looks full screen to me, too, almost.
Okay. If anyone needs to zoom in to read any text, if you hold Control and use the scroll wheel on your mouse, you could kind of zoom in independently if you need to. So our agenda for this evening is to give you a very brief update on the work that we've been doing since we last met with you a few months ago. I'll give you a quick schedule update. We'll spend the most of the presentation tonight on talking about the landscape integration plan that includes all of the updates that we've been making to circulation, arc gateways. Glenn, we'll walk you through our park planting concept, and we'll share with you some updates on the park amenities. We'll also give you a snapshot of where we think the probable construction costs are aiming as we're gearing up towards submitting our 60% drawings. We'll talk a little bit about next steps, and then hopefully have a good discussion about questions and comments that you all have on the update. In terms of project schedule, we are still in the detailed design phase. That's the big green bar on top of the screen there, between pre-design and construction. That's where all of the nice renderings and pictures start to transition to black and white technical drawings. And you'll see a little bit of that in the presentation tonight. Within detailed design, if you look at that bigger series of bars on the bottom of the screen here, we're just gearing up to submit 60% design drawings for review. That review will go to both cities and to the sewer district for comment. We will be looking for comments on those 60% drawings as we shift gears now and move into the 90% design task, which is really tightening up all the nuts and bolts and making sure we have a really good set of drawings that can go up to bid sometime in 2025. We'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of the presentation. The next slide shows our landscape integration plan, where we are at 60% design. And if you squint at this, it's gonna look very similar to what you saw at 30% design. And in our minds, that's a good thing, because we're not making any drastic changes at this point. We're feeling pretty confident that the scope of work that has been identified by the sewer district and the cities is remaining consistent, and there's not really any major surprises that we're seeing as we're refining the design around all of the existing conditions and understanding all of the technical conditions of the project and moving all of this earth around. Just to summarize very quickly on the screen, this plan identifies the entire proposed circulation system throughout the park. It identifies by annotation all of the major amenities that are proposed in the park. And it also includes some light details about the planting character that you're going to see. And Glenn will walk you through in a little bit more detail in just a few minutes. Just to reiterate, and I know we've talked about this each of the last couple times we've met with city councils, that landscape integration plan that we just shared with you is not only the product of many months of design effort on behalf of the design team in conjunction with the cities and the sewer district, but it's also informed by a very robust public engagement process that we laid out at the outset of this project. And we're really fortunate to have been able to connect with over 2,000 community members of Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights that have helped identify priorities for this project and steer us in a direction that is most appropriate for your communities. And so I think that is not lost on us, that this is, you know, a really exciting opportunity for the communities to provide input on this exciting project. And that will continue on as we go forward, as you know. Just as important as that engagement, though, is making sure that the function of the streams is maximized. And to be able to do that requires a lot of work, as you all know. What you see here on the screen is our proposed 100-year flood plain. This is the area of the park highlighted in blue that we anticipate will be inundated.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, we talked this over, and we're gonna, we're gonna watch this on, you know, when it's streamed. We're gonna go back to public comment. I apologize for this. We, we were just trying to follow our agenda, and we had no idea you were coming, but we want to give you all the respect you deserve. So again, when you come up, please say your name. You have three minutes. Addie, can you put the minutes back up? And we're gonna actually have Addie call you up in the order that you signed up.
Is it Beckett Bickerstaff? Brenda Bickerstaff, thank you.
And I'd like to get Councilwoman Davida Russell and Councilman Petrus back in the room, if that's possible. Councilwoman Russell, Councilman Petrus.
Okay, my name is Brenda Bickerstaff. I am the founder of Citizens for Safer Cleveland. Citizens for Safer Cleveland did a ballot initiative for police oversight in Cleveland. There is a commission over the Cleveland police now. Craig Cobb, I know who you are. You were a judge downtown. I'm a private investigator now, but however, I understand what they're going through. My niece died in this jail back in 2015. And Cleveland Heights were negligent, just like they were negligent the night that Christian got murdered. He got murdered, and they had CIT people. And they did not even pull the CIT people there to assist him. He was having a breakdown, and that's what the CIT training is for. Another issue I want to bring up. I have attended a lot of graduations from your academy here, and a lot of people don't make the cut. And these people are at top of the class with passing scores of 90, people that pass their UGILY. And these people wasn't even picked. They told me that they are very selective. They said, just because you pass everything means that you will not get on this force. So what that tells me, those officers out there, I'm gonna call you Judge Cobb, that those officers knew what they were there to do. They came there intentionally to kill that young man, because if they didn't, they would have brought the CIT people, because his father called for help. It was horrible to see Mr. Thomas sit on that lawn and cry about his son. That was horrible. And they had the nerve to have an assault rifle. What a coward. And these officers, not only in Cleveland, but across this country, need to go to the penitentiary. But I'm gonna tell you something, you guys have power. You can initiate your own investigation of what happened. And I'm gonna tell you, the chief know, because the chief looked at the video, all the video that they don't even have, period. The chief even said he did not point a gun at them. He was running. He was running away. So you're telling me that they don't know better? Cleveland Heights got the best police academy in the state of Ohio. They do not pick people who are at top of the class. And usually, those are the people that most departments pick. So that tells me those officers was trained, 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 trained. They knew exactly what they were there to do. And they were there not to help him to get past this middle episode. They was there to murder him. And please, please, give this family what they're looking for. They're looking for justice. They're looking for transparency. So don't tell me, because I work with the system, and I know what they're about. Now they're trying to hide their names. But I'm gonna find out who their names are. Trust and believe that. And I'm gonna tell this family, and I'm gonna post them all over social media.
Carol Steiner?
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Bill Swain, 2105 West 91st Street, Cleveland, 44102. I think this whole session already says how racist this whole society is. That, yeah, black people are here, but they're, they can't even, they can't even speak, actually, until it was okay to watch this forever, which had nothing to do with Christian and the actual, what Brenda just spoke to, of intentionally killing this man. Come on now, and say that he did this or he did that. It's the same thing. It is a lynching. It was a lynching. There's more people that are killed by the police in this country, a thousand a year, more than during the whole period of lynching of black people. And that's what I want to talk about. What's going on here that actually, he's trying to tell me, oh, wait and wait, watch this? This is just a racist bullshit thing that we have to watch something other than what's really caused us to come here today. So my point is, yeah, I'm a revolutionary. I need to get rid of this system. The Black Panthers were right. Malcolm was right. You're not gonna get justice under this system. We know that. But we're gonna fight, fight, fight to get justice. That's it for me right now. Thank you. But I wanna, I wanna thank all the voices here. The aunt, etc., I never met you before, but you're on the, you're on it, sister.
I am here, and I'm gonna be on, and I'm gonna be on it.
That's it.
Carol Steiner, you up next?
Yeah, I really feel like I don't have anything to add to what the first two people spoke on. However, I live on Somerton. I've lived in Cleveland Heights for almost 40 years. My kids graduated from Heights High. And I used to feel somewhat proud of living in Cleveland Heights, but no more. When it comes to the police, Cleveland Heights is just like Cleveland, Ferguson, New York City, Baltimore, and Minneapolis. I know the police have a job to do, and that is to maintain the current system. Don't tell me something else, because that's exactly what they're here for. And part of that is keeping black and brown people down, poorer, more unhoused, more lead poisoned, et cetera, on and on and on. And if you don't think this is a racist system, which the police help enforce, then why are black people five times more likely to be stopped by the police and close to three times more likely to be killed by the police than white people, according to The Washington Post? As part of the city administration, you all can do the right thing for the Thomas family. Why haven't you released all of the body cam footage?
That tells you a lot about.
Yes, sir.
And the ring cameras. So the cops who killed Christian need to be held accountable. That is something that we absolutely need to see. I fought against police brutality for many years, against your narrative that it's okay to gun down young black people. And I'm here to say it is not okay. Black lives matter. Christians' lives, life matters.
I want to see y'all launch that investigation. You got the power to do that.
I'm just, the mayor had said that basically, it's okay for us to hold his feet to the fire, so that's why I'm here. And I'm just really shocked that we don't have the footage and stuff. This happened on August 29th, and we are at October 20th. What's the deal? Where's the footage? Where's the explanation? Where's the, so that's, and, and didn't the chief say that he didn't have a gun? What's the deal?
Arthur Blaney II? Excuse me if I pronounce that wrong.
Yes, Arthur Blakey II. I am one of the Stolen Lives members, also have a sister that was murdered by police 35 years ago, which I just had her memorial for. Her name was Kianna. And ever since then, I have stood with families that have lost their lives to police brutality, police murder, that just escalates and escalates and escalates and just goes on and on and just gets more brutal and more volatile with much vitriol. And in this case, this is what I have saw, you know? But the narrative is always first with the police, always first. Always the families, the story is the families, and who this person really was is always buried into bureaucracy. And we are, you know, saying what I am saying, you know, as being one that has lost somebody to police, they had fought for families for more than 25 years. To say that this family deserves the accountability they deserve, you know, to what happened and everything that has been released, as everybody has been saying, accountability needs to be held for this family, and this family deserves justice. Thank you.
Abdul Rahasan? I'm sorry if I pronounce that wrong again.
Oh, sir, sir, can you come up to the microphone? And if not, we can bring a microphone to you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Like I said, I've been in a lot of cases like this, where police have done all these things, probably on television and everything else. And another thing about this news media too, they write the wrong things in there, contain itself, what they say the police said and what the people said. People from the news center don't know what happened. They accept and tell a lie on his father, saying that he says something to them, blaming his son for, for this son being killed. I've never seen that before in my life. If he killed my baby, I know what I done to him. But I being a Muslim, I can't do it that way, because they didn't kill mine. If they had killed one of mine, I would have taken that to put everywhere else. And my ultimate meaning would take those three, get out of here. And I know this is not the best way to say it, but that's what's needed. That's what's needed. If we, if we fight back and quit being afraid to die, that we can allow our babies to die. And that's something we're gonna have to straighten out. You people are not gonna do it, because you scared of the power that be. Because the police guard y'all behind as well as the rest of them. So naturally, you're gonna be afraid for yourself and your family and everybody else. You know how dirty these bastards are. So you, you should do what you're supposed to do and get these people whole. Get them whole. Do what you're supposed to do. Ain't you tired? Aren't you tired of that shit going on with y'all hating black people who did every damn thing they could for you? That your baby suck on her titties, raped our, raped our women, beat our men and everything else for doing some free work for them, and you still mad? Ain't you tired? Aren't you tired? Cut this bullshit out, get together.
Thank you, Anthony. Tiffany Tyson?
My name is Tiffany Tyson, and I'm Christian Alexander Tyson, Thomas's mother. And I find this very disgusting is the word I wrote down. To come here and find out that it's still business as usual. While my son, who was a son of Cleveland Heights, who grew up in this neighborhood from kindergarten till now, and this is the treatment that my son gets. Not only was I a daughter of Cleveland Heights, but I served on the PTA council. I was involved in this community. I had a program for other little kids in elementary schools, teaching them Lego robotics. I contributed to this neighborhood. And this is what I get. I get that my son, as he was trying to flee and get to safety, was gunned down. That's what I get. In the back, in the back. And then instead of saying, hey, we made a mistake. I get people not being transparent, not releasing video footage, not thoroughly investigating, and then expect me to believe that you're actually telling the truth. You want me to believe, because when people are truthful, they release everything and say, hey, look at this, look at this, look at this, look at this. They don't withhold stuff and, and fang dangle things and don't do their job properly. That's not what you do when you were actually in the right. I'm, I'm just I'm just overcome with grief at what this city has deteriorated into. Words can't express how I expected my son to have proper protocols followed when he was experiencing mental health or needing help. I didn't see anybody try to open lines of communication with him. But I pray, I pray that justice is served, and I pray this don't happen again. But you know what that's gonna take? It's gonna take for people to be transparent and take accountability. once again, this is disgusting. I don't have another word to use. I didn't really get a chance to write down, as I heard everything that people were saying, and I really didn't get to express properly, but I guess there's no words when something like this happens. I just want change. I want transparency, because guess what? It could be anybody's son. And if you care about your children, don't let this rest. Don't let it rest, because when people don't take responsibility, it happens again. I want justice for my son, because he deserves better.
Do your own investigation. You guys have the power to do that. You're elected officials in that seat. You have the authority to get in that police department or the Attorney General and do an inquiry for your own knowledge.
I understand.
You got that power?
Is there another?
Yes. Sarah Continenza?
Good evening, Council. Sarah Continenza, 4222 Bexley Boulevard, South Euclid. Happen to be a neighbor. I am a city councilwoman in South Euclid, so I understand this role. I understand that we often can get the brunt of what happens in our community, right? And we also have power. And so I'm here today to advocate for us to use that power in a positive way that can help this family find some justice and peace. Because I am very dear friends with Christian's grandmother, Mary Kay. I happened to get to know Christian briefly when he came out to our farmer's market events, and he was always super sweet, super awesome, and I wish I got to know him better. And this is a super tragedy, we can't take it back. But we can move forward in a way that can progress this community and give everyone a sense of peace and move forward in a way that feels like there's something that has been done, that he didn't die in vain. And I know that there are policies in place, I ask that they be strengthened, that no deadly force be used. I mean, tasers exist, you know, rubber bullets, anything but a rifle that mows down a young man fleeing. I, I ask through the Freedom of Information Act that we get transparency, get every single bit of footage. I've never heard of ring camera footage going missing. That's a new one, we need that. We need every body cam. We, and, and anything that is done, I would love to, you know, maybe partner. South Euclid is already, you know, we share dispatch. We have a negotiating unit, and, you know, call us. Make sure our officers know you can call. We have negotiators that are trained, and I know that your officers are trained, and we can get, we can move forward here. I would, I would happily introduce any legislation you guys do in South Euclid too, in solidarity. You know, we can do this together, we can turn this into something positive. And I'm asking colleague to colleague, let's, let's use our power in a positive way and make this tragedy something that was not in vain, because he, his life mattered and his whole, and we are not gonna stop coming. And we're not gonna stop emailing, and we're not gonna stop demanding justice for Christian, and we would like to see those officers, we need to see some sort of, you know, punishment. I mean, the fact that they disobeyed how things should be done. I, I ask that you please consider that, and I'm always available. Councilwoman Russell, you got my contact. Let's, let's talk, and anything I could do in solidarity in South Euclid, we are together in this, okay? So please, just let me know, and I love you all. I'm here for you, whatever I can do to help, okay?
Mr. President, we have one more. Genesis Tyson Thompson?
My name is Genesis. At first, I thought I was too young to get up here and say something. But this is my brother, so I wanted to say something. I think the way that you guys were gonna let that call go on, when we were all sitting here waiting to talk about my brother who's been killed in front of me and my sister and my father, had to watch him die. I'm the one that called the ambulance when they shot him. No one called for help, because they knew that they shot him so many times that he wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna live. I called 911. While they all sat there, I yelled at them, I asked them, please go hold the body. No one went towards him, they let him bleed out. Days after this happened, when I met the mayor, he told me he was sorry. But what I just saw right there, it didn't seem sorry to me. It didn't seem sorry at all. Because when y'all put that up there, then y'all ask yourselves, what's more important? Or a park? Than a park. It's happened too many times to too many kids. I went to Cleveland Heights High School. I was gonna graduate from Cleveland Heights High School in two years. More than 70% of Cleveland Heights High School is black. And to think that this would happen in our town is crazy. And to somebody that I live with every day of my life, to go to his funeral and see all his casket, 18 years, two months, and 19 days, when I've lived with him for 16 years, two months, and six days, to see his life being put in numbers. He never got to be a dad. He never got to go to college or get a job or even move out of his parents' house. And we called them for help. And everyone's speeches were beautiful. And I feel like it's just one more thing that needed to be said. My neighbors, the house that Christian died in their driveway, did you know that his body laid there till 6:00 in the morning? Did you know that she had to buy a sheet? Because she was scared that we would come back to the house and see his body in the blood laying there. She had to, my, my neighbor had to cover the body, so when the parents came back, we didn't see him laying there. Till 6:00 in the morning, they left him laying in the driveway like a dog. And then for us to come here? And it was almost like you guys didn't want us to get up and speak? It's just really insensitive. And the police officer said, me and my sister, they brought us to the station that night. And did you know that the person that told us that he was there? We didn't know yet. After we called the ambulance, I thought that they put him on the ambulance. When he came and told us, he said, oh, him? He's dead, I thought you knew.
And then took, and then took them without telling my brother. Genesis is a minor. They took them into interrogation room. Without
His two sisters.
Without parents.
He's gonna After we just seen him get shot and gunned down, they gonna ask us, I thought you knew.
They respected them. So they crying the whole time. And, and I was with them, they just, oh, well.
Left them there.
They, they told me nothing, no harm had come to my grandson.
Oh, let's not forget how they put the stretcher back on the EMS truck too.
Lied.
They lied to us. They was like, well, we don't know. We don't know. After I called the ambulance, we don't know. And I just, even though I love attending Cleveland Heights High School, I just think it was disgusting how everybody treated my brother like he didn't mean nothing, and how they left him laying there for hours on end. That's all I have to say, thank you.
It is powerful, that's why it was so important for you to do your own inquiry.
I, I just want to say that I, I want to apologize to everybody that's here for my following the agenda when it was clear that was the wrong thing to do. And please, accept my apology. I, this is far more important than anything that could have come before council or any plans we made with another city. And I do apologize to all of you.
Do an investigation. You want to really say you're sorry? No, listen to me, sir. Do your own inquiry. You guys are elected by the people, and the people have a right to know what happened. You have the authority. You are council. You can get involved and ask the chief, release the information to the family, to their lawyer, so they can see what happened. Don't wait on BCI. You have a right, you have the authority. That's what the power of the vote does. They gives you the power. They gives you the power to exercise your authority. You have a right to do this. I am urging you and begging you to do this. Please do this. Do not let this fall on deaf ears.
I hear everything you say. Is there anybody else on council that wants to speak? Because I don't want to...
I would like to hope that one of y'all would have something to say, including the mayor. I mean, come on. Tell us something. Say something.
I understand.
I'd really take a look at Christian and read his obituary. Because the way y'all looking, y'all looking like when y'all walk out, we just gonna be...
Ma'am, I'm very moved by everything that was said tonight. I'm very, very sorry for your... I understand.
You need to do, listen, Craig Cobb, I'm depending on you. You used to be a judge. Now, I understand you may have limited access to things, but you are elected in that seat. And you can encourage all these council members here to you guys to do a letter to the chief. You have the authority to do that. You could do a letter to BCI to release this information. I'm telling you, I know what this family is going through. I've been down that road. My brother got killed by the Cleveland police. And my daddy was a cop for 33 years in Cleveland. Okay? So don't, my thing is, at the end of the day, you've got the authority to do your job, exercising. Don't be scared of the police. Just because you investigating, don't mean you hate the police. You want to know the truth. You want to know the truth. See, the problem is with the police, and the reason why a lot of them don't get convicted, because a lot of people is scared of the police. Jurors are scared of the police. I've seen judges that's scared of the police. I'm telling you what, I witnessed myself. Nobody told me nothing. We got to start standing up, and these elected officials got to start standing up and let these police know, "You're not going to commit these crimes against these citizens and walk away." It's not, it's not gonna happen. Because blue can go down too, just like they sent everybody else to the penitentiary. Blue needs to go down too.
Again...
That behavior.
He was deformed.
The reason I called the police to my house that evening, because I'm not scared of the police. I expected them to come help me, and they did not. And the last thing that I said to them before they murdered my son was, "Do not murder my son." And that's exactly what they did anyway. That's what they did. And I can never take it back. Because I should stay in the damn house with him. And then maybe he would still be alive today.
Sir, you have the authority. I'm telling you, do it. And I guarantee you, if the police try to come after you, the residents will back you. Trust and believe that. I don't live in this city. I live in Cleveland. I would come up here personally and back you and bring a lot of people with me. Trust and believe that. You got the authority to do it.
Okay, before we move on, Council Vice President Russell would like to say something.
First of all, I want to say I'm so very sorry for the death of your son. And I want to say that the information that I've heard here today is actually the first time I've heard it. Excuse me. The information that I've heard here today is the first time I've heard it. And I give my sincere apologies. When I did find out about the death of the son, I came to the house. I came to the house to visit the family. No one was there, but I left something in the mailbox for the family to get in contact with me. But the information you have given us here today actually gives us something to either talk with the mayor about or to talk among us as council people. But just so that you know, the information that you are giving us here today, or me, I'm gonna speak for me. The information that I've heard here today is the first time I've heard it. So I am, so I am giving you my sincere apologies for the death of your son.
Do the inquiry. You really sorry, ma'am? You would encourage the...
I'm very sorry.
We get together and do an inquiry on that shooting and demand answer. You can say you sorry all you want, but if you don't show it, what does it mean?
I understand.
It means nothing. Please do it.
All right. We are gonna move on and read our legislation now. Please know you're always welcome here, and we hear you loud and clear. And we are so sorry, so sorry for your loss. This is awful. Addie, we're gonna do first readings for consider... I mean, if the mayor wanted to speak, he would, he would ask me to speak. Mayor?
I did say that I wanted people to hold my feet to the fire, and I think that it's important that all of you came down here today. Give me a chance to speak, sir. Give me a chance to speak. I said at the outset that this is a terrible tragedy and that I'm sorry. And I wish that I could give your son back. I know that I can't. I went to the funeral to pay my respects. And I recognize that maybe my presence wasn't welcome, and I understand that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I... Yeah. I was there. I was there. I came, I came to talk to you and, and I was, I was told in no uncertain terms that I was not welcome, and I, and I backed off, and I did not speak to you that day, sir, and I'm sorry. Now, I, all of you know that we are not conducting the criminal investigation into the actions that the police took that night.
You can ask questions.
Please, just let me speak. And I want to apologize from the bottom of my heart for how long it's taken us to get those body cam footage files to you. I know that right now, something that does not matter in the least but is a practical impediment to us getting that out has been what we've historically used. We're getting new software that will allow us to do this a whole hell of a lot faster. And so I want to let you know I'm terribly sorry for how long this is taking. My understanding is that all of the footage from the incident itself has been redacted and released in accordance with the law that we have to follow. And the rest of it, the re... We have, we have to, we have, we have to by law. Please let me speak. I appreciate you telling me that, and I did not, I did not know that. And I apologize for that. Now I'll be talking with the Law Department about that. My, my understanding is that the redactions that we were doing were to protect the identity of the, and if that, if we, if we failed in that, you have my... Understood.
So who, who you protecting? Because you're not protecting us.
I understand, sir. I hear you. I hear you. So I'll be having to talk, I'll be having to talk with the Law Department about expediting this. And if, if there is a way to waive that, then maybe that's what we can pursue so that we can get this out immediately. And so I'll be conferring with the Law Department to see what our options are on that, and we'll be reaching out to you for those purposes. I understand.
You already got all the minors in the videos already, they already up there.
I appreciate, I, I hear you. I hear you. I just need to make sure that we're doing it the right way and the legal way. And I don't have all of that at the top of my head, and I apologize for that. But I, just give me a second. Let me, let me... Let me, let me, please let me...
I can play that night over and over in my head, again and again. Every day. I play that night over in my head, eight times in an hour. It's been two months, almost three. How many people you got working on it, one? Because if it was just one man like me, I have all that out already. You got two men working on it? Three? A whole team? We've got a whole county. Oh, this is BCI, Cleveland Heights. Who's doing it? And I know it's more than one man doing it, and it don't take two, three months to get this done.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask... I'm gonna ask for an explanation about this, and in fact, I'm gonna turn it over right now. I'm gonna turn it over right now to the... Can you give me a second? Sir, please, please, just give me a second. I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the Assistant Law Director to provide a little bit of insight. So, so...
Well, what they can do, they can do an inquiry.
Can you do that?
And they can send a letter to BCI as well and tell them what they're looking for. You have the authority, mayor, to go talk to the chief.
Will you do that?
You, you have, and I understand they're protecting the patrol order police and the union and the contract, but this is a murder that happened in your city where the gentleman was suffering from a mental breakdown that needed help. You, you, sir, you got power.
I understand. I understand, but I want to, I want to make something. I want to make something.
You know you're wrong.
And so we, yeah, we're telling you, hey, we want some transparency and justice, but it's really just for the general public. We already know you wrong, and so do you. So just do the right thing. Just do the right thing. That's all you have to do.
Why drag it out?
Yeah. You think I would be here putting, putting my name, my licensure and all that stuff in front of all these people if I didn't know that y'all was wrong? You're wrong. And not only he has to live with that, you got my nieces and nephews. They have to live with that a lot longer than all of us in this room. We all... She's 16. She's gonna have to live with that for the rest of her life. I'm gonna have to live with the fact that I saw him laying there for the rest of my life.
And then on top of them, officers laughing after the fact. While I'm sitting there crying in my yard, and it's officers laughing under the streetlight.
They should be fired.
Like it's a joke. Like it's just another day at the job.
Until I saw him, everybody sat there and watched him.
Mayor, you got the authority. You got, you got authority. You got power. People elected in office, you got power.
Ladies and gentlemen, could I ask everybody, could I, could I ask everybody? I understand.
Y'all need to ask that man for it. Since he ain't giving it to us, he can give it to y'all. I can guarantee y'all can get it before we can because we've been asking for it for two months. Tomorrow's our graduation tomorrow.
Y'all can be just as traumatized as me.
As we are, because I can live it in my head. And the officers don't leave, they're still getting paid right.
Mayor, I'm taking it, your remarks are...
You can do this, wow.
I would like to, I would like to respond to you. There are three investigations going on right now. One of them is the criminal investigation that the state government is doing.
BCI?
BCI, Bureau of Criminal Investigations at the state level is doing a criminal investigation into the actions of the officers. There is, please, please stop.
Let the mayor finish, please.
Second investigation is into the events preceding officers coming onto the scene in order to understand what happened there. And that's being done by Cleveland Heights, because Cleveland Heights has jurisdiction over that. That's correct. Now, this is, the third investigation is an administrative investigation into those actions, which is right now dependent on some of the information that BCI would need to release to us because we are not going to be able to interfere in the criminal investigation with our administrative investigation.
Right. Cleveland Heights Police Department went to my house immediately after they murdered my son in front of me. And told me I can't go in there.
I can...
And they won't even let him see him.
I am, I am absolutely...
The entire day, I got four Ring cameras outside of my house. All of a sudden, they just... August 29th, nothing? It's garbage day.
I don't have, I don't have any information about that. I don't, I don't. This is something I want to hear about, though, and I appreciate you telling me about that because that is not something I've heard about.
Should've known. You fucking should've known already. Because it's your job, man.
What does the law director have to say? Because he's the law director of the city.
No, no, he's in a... He's an assistant law director. And what I was going to ask the assistant law director is to outline what footage has not yet been released. Give us a second, sir. Your mic is not on.
At this point, the city has released all the footage from body cam that we have that documents the shots fired in the moments before the shots fired. Well, the moments of the shots fired. There is additional body cam of the aftermath and a couple interviews that is still being processed. And it is a limitation of our technology that we've had with the city that hasn't been able to, we haven't been able to process as faster. The mayor has...
If you would let, let the assistant...
We pay the highest property taxes in the entire state of fucking Ohio. And I've been a resident here for almost 40 years, dude. And you really telling me that I'm not limited technology?
The mayor has authorized us to...
A lot of money go to our schools and whatnot, and we love that. Part of the reason that we're here. But, what, you paying what, 4%? Come on, man. I pay literally $9,000 a year in property taxes.
The mayor has, has on an expedited basis authorized us to purchase additional software to address this, which we have a contract from that vendor currently in review. We're gonna get it as soon as possible, and that's going to expedite the review and processing.
Wait a second. Can I ask you one question? And I'm not trying to be funny here. When my niece died in this jail in $215, y'all had software problems then. I did the investigation. So you still tell me in 2024, you still got problems with your software? I did the investigation, so you still telling me in two thousand twenty four, you still got problems with your software? When you told us back in two thousand fifteen, they was gonna correct it? Are you telling me that today?
That can't be.
She's been dead, it's been almost ten years for her. Makes you be ten, her name was Rakina Jones.
It can't be.
She died in this jail because of your software problem, so you telling me it's still a problem?
Alright, alright, so.
People post every day online.
Miss Berman, I love that. Well, also, look, now y'all have implemented new stuff at the high school now. If you got a software program up there, are the kids safe now? Because y'all just doing something new up there right now, or do, do y'all need to revamp that too?
We.
I wanna know, because, because if all of the citizens ain't safe with the police, how you gonna have the police policing the schools, and then you supposed to think that the kids are safe now? So, what, what, which one is it?
Sir, we don't, we don't have, we don't have.
Here, not in the streets.
I'm sorry.
Doing your best in the street and not there.
Sir, we don't have any involvement in the school's facilities. We don't have any involvement in the school's facilities and the magnetometers that they have.
Because that's where our tax dollars go. That's what you said, my tax dollars.
The city, the city does not. The school district is a separate, separate a- agency.
I can't understand what software needed, that it's a video, right? Video's been out since, I don't even know when, right? A video record, people upload video to Facebook all day, people take livestream all day. It ain't no software needed for you to release a video for us to see what's going on.
Everybody in here, hold it, hold it up right now.
So, I, like I said.
We can upload it to, we can upload it to your software.
Sir, and, and ma'am, actually, you know what, now, um, 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 what I would like to say i- is that with potentially the waiver of certain restrictions that we have on publicly releasing footage like this, I'm saying.
You already put my daughter's face on TV, so stop saying that.
Sir, let me, let me, just let me finish this, let me, let me finish this things. Please.
No, it's not about you blurting nothing out or redacting anything, you already dropped the ball on that, so don't say that no more.
And you've already.
Because I've already, you said that already, and then literally, less than twenty-four hours later, her face was on the TV. Her whole face. That's the only reason you should say you was redacting anything or holding anything back, so please stop saying that.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna tell you something, there are mandatory versus discretionary redactions that we are obligated to pursue, even if we drop the ball.
Okay, can we have a list, can we have a list of those?
And I'm, I don't mind, I don't mind providing that, I don't mind providing that. And I think, we, should we reach out to you to talk about that? Okay, then we'll reach out to you to talk about that. Like I said, and like I've said this whole time, it is a priority of mine to get this out as quickly as legally possible, and I have said that I want this out as quickly as possible. And so that's what we're gonna do from here on out.
So there were two to three officers in the back of the house. Why don't we have that Body Cam footage there? That was my nephew.
Everybody's name on the scene.
And yeah.
Other footage was in and out from the front of the house where there was no shooting at. We seen different angles, but we didn't see what happened. Why aren't you guys?
But the police chief saw what happened, and he said he didn't have a gun, so all y'all can't see that video, if he saw it.
He seen it that night.
He said it, you can't take it back.
My brother.
Yeah, how much can y'all redact that, too much?
Plus, in the BCI investigation, are they gonna talk to the family? Are they gonna investigate the fact that the cameras were taken away? And the cops were laughing?
I want you, I would like for you to speak with BCI, sir, I would like for you to speak with BCI. And.
Because you know what, they've been disloyal the entire time. They've been disloyal the entire time, because they said they were the first people in the house, but they weren't the first people in the house. Cleveland Heights Police Department was the first people in the house. They raided my house literally in front of me. And then, and then, yeah, and then BCI just said, oh, yeah, no, we, we've been doing the investigation here and there, like.
And after the detective told me and my other brother that night, no, we called them, we called BCI, it's their.
After they took my daughter to the investigation.
But they had already trampled all over the, the crime, the, the scene, what they were calling a crime, which was their crime, not my brother. They trampled all, all over that scene, they wouldn't let us, nowhere near Christian, then they went in my brother's home looking to cover some stuff up already. And Christian wasn't even shot in the house. He was shot outside. When he was running away from y'all, that, I, I, like.
Y'all gonna find out.
Council, Council President, Council President, uh, I would like to make a request.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor, are you, is there anything else you'd like to say? I don't wanna cut you off.
Honestly, I think nothing that I'm gonna say tonight. It's, and I, I recognize that, and, and sir, I, what I'd like to do, I'd like to sit down with you.
After y'all took our stand there, and I appreciate you for that, and I appreciate you trying to reach out, man, but. You gotta do better, man, where's the justice? You gotta do better.
Council President, uh, I would like to make a request that we all see the footage of what happened, since I have not.
All of it, that was on TV.
Well, that would be up to the mayor, not up to me. Who, who would it be up to?
It, it, it is not up to me.
I'm saying who, who would we request that from?
Out, and so we can see the footage.
I'm sorry?
Request that from the law director.
Okay, alright.
And let me tell you something, your next move is going to change in a key. You all being the epicenter of diversion and inclusion, that diverse, diversity and inclusion in North Texas, Ohio. Y'all are gonna lose it, I'm gonna make sure of it, I'm gonna make sure, if y'all don't do the right thing, that Cleveland Heights will no longer be known. It's where you need to go, when you wanna experience belongingness and safety, and if you're a diver, if you're a diverse culture and socioeconomic status, if you wanna feel included, Cleveland Heights will no longer be it, and I will make sure of it, and let me tell you something, I ain't gonna get tired, I'm going to be here.
Look, you know how the rights we are, Cuda, President Cuda. You was my son's teacher, at Checkers Heights.
I remember him well, and fondly.
Right.
A beautiful family that you have destroyed, destroyed.
I'm, I'm so sorry, I am just so sorry.
Everybody's American dream is getting to raise a beautiful family in a beautiful home, in a beautiful community. You are shattering my brother's dream, the place that we go, go to Thanksgiving, all of the barbecues, everything is up in that fifth bedroom, five.
Never be the same.
That he works hard for, that he raises kids in, and you wanna murder Christians right there. I brought my children here to this community four or some years ago because of that, and. It ain't home no more.
It's not home no more.
I got one more.
I work particularly.
The Tyson family as well.
And I'm still working in the schools, here in this.
I just, just FYI, when you don't speak in one of the mics, no one can hear you, only us here in the room, okay?
So I got one more question.
We hear you. We hear you.
What changed the situation for him to grab an assault rifle?
A coward.
Why was he the assault rifle used?
Father was already outside the house.
This is a coward.
It was only him in the house.
And he enjoyed what he did.
Escalated the situation for him to feel like he needed that much firepower.
He enjoyed what he did.
Assault rifle.
Yeah, that person, that murderer, he enjoyed what he did.
For somebody who was only a danger to himself.
He enjoyed what he did. I want it.
So does your department issue those back?
I want, I want, oh, I want him to, I, I mean it.
I understand.
Um, I'll put breath back into my vagus.
It should be a reason why it should escalate from your service, Christian, to a assault rifle, and I really don't see why, if there was only one person in the house, why he felt that he upgraded to an assault rifle, which everybody in here, but he shot it, what, eighteen times? More than that, thirty something?
Did y'all hear that?
You wanna make a motion?
Did y'all hear that? Did y'all hear that? Thirty-seven rounds.
Alright, so, um, here's, here's what I think, uh, Councilman Maddox, that you wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we're gonna take a five-minute recess so we can reset to make sure that we're communicating our next steps as well, we wanna make sure that we're hearing what's being said and, and make sure we're moving forward in terms of what needs to happen next with these.
And I certainly would like to speak to the family as well, so, um, do we have a second on that recess?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? All in favor of taking a five-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're in recess. I'm gonna reconvene this, uh, meeting of City Council, uh, we do have one more, uh, speaker, and then we're gonna go into legislation.
CJ Nash. You could set this to one minute and I'll be done for this, some people are gonna be pissed at me, you go, some people are gonna be pissed at me, you know, you know this. We got this thing going on that to me is a personal thing. Can you hear me now? We got this thing going on, and you guys all know what it is, it's a personal thing, and it's costing the city three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. The priority is this, this is a young man that got killed. That thing that's costing three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, which to me is a witch hunt, needs to stop, and the priority that's going into that three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour to lawyers for that witch hunt, that priority needs to go to this, that's all I gotta say.
Okay, that's all we've got for comments.
Okay, we're gonna move to, uh, first readings for consideration of adoption. And, uh, there's one, two, three, four items that we discussed in committee of the hall, Addie, would you please start?
First.
Oh, this, this is, uh, legislation that we have to read, it's illegal. When we get to council comments, I, some might, may wanna say that council comments come right after we read the legislation, we'll go through it as fast as we can.
First, I have resolution number one ninety-three dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the agreement with Wade Trim Inc. for professional design and engineering services relating to control of sanitary sewer overflow CH thirteen and CH sixty-one and illicit connections on Hampshire Road, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, and ordinance amending ordinance number one forty dash twenty twenty-one to broaden the authorized expenditure of ARPA funds to include water infrastructure improvements and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number one ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number one ninety-six dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the twenty twenty-four tax year collection pursuant to section three twenty-one point three four of the Ohio Revised Code, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we move to first readings only now, there are one, two, three.
First, I have resolution number one ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Classic Ford of Madison for the acquisition of two twenty twenty-four Ford F three fifty one-ton regular cab trucks for the refuse and recycling division of the Department of Public Works. Next, I have resolution number one ninety-eight dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with McQueen Equipment LLC for the acquisition of two seven-and-a-half-yard fifty-fifty split-body EZ Dump direct truck mounts, and for the refuse and recycling division of the Department of Public Works. Finally, I have resolution number one ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution proclaiming the city of Cleveland Heights is a safe haven for gender-affirming healthcare. This is introduced by Councilmember Lar, Councilmember Larson, President Cuda, Vice President Russell, Councilmembers Maddox, Petrus, and Posh.
Alright, we move now to second readings.
I have ordinance number one ninety dash twenty twenty-four on second reading, and ordinance enacting section three thirty-one point four six of the codified ordinances of Cleveland Heights entitled Driving While Texting, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Also moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number one ninety-one dash twenty twenty-four on second reading, a resolution increasing the compensation of a clerk of counsel introduced by President Cuda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Just wanna say how, uh, much we appreciate the work that Addie has done as our clerk, uh, our very first clerk in terms of building processes and procedures and working with seven of us to keep our schedule organized, and just wanna appreciate that the work that you're doing, and, uh, just know that you are a valued part of our team, and we absolutely appreciate you, and we thank you, we thank you for all that you did.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Larson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Addie, um, you've certainly met my expectations and exceeded them, but I'm also very proud of you for going out and getting that credential, so hopefully we'll be on to the next one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, and let me just say, um, Addie, I really appreciate your steady commitment to professional development. The relationships that you've developed with the, your kind of fellow clerks, which I think has really served you well, and, and in turn served us well, uh, your responsiveness, um, you're one of the fastest textures I've ever met, um, your willingness to push back even when I don't want you to. Your zucchini bread, uh, I just, you know, and, you know, through the discussions we had about um, this piece of legislation, I think we have a, a better process, uh, for evaluation and, and so forth, so, uh, thank you, Addie, I, I just can't imagine doing this without you. Yes.
Ditto, Addie.
Thank you, thank you all.
Alright, um, and with that, did we, I'm, I'm.
We have a motion in a second, I just need a vote.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Uh, moving on to consent agenda, I'll read all three, and then I, I will need a motion to suspend rules. Uh, first, I have resolution number two hundred dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution recognizing October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four as International Climate Action Day in Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by City Council members and Mayor Sarin. Next, I have resolution number two oh one dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution declaring October twenty twenty-four National Community Planning Month, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by City Council and Mayor Sarin. Finally, I have resolution number two oh two dash twenty twenty-four on first reading, a resolution declaring November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four Small Business Saturday, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by City Council members and Mayor Sarin.
You have a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend rules.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and now we'll vote on the legislation.
I need a motion in a second, thank you.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That pass, that motion passes. Next is committee reports. Councilwoman Larson?
I will be very brief, um, the Municipal Services Environmental Sustainability Committee met this morning, we had a great meeting with Joe DeWitt-Foy, who is a member of the Heights Bike.
Oh, your mic cut out.
Thank you, Addie, um, the Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee, Committee Report, um, is covering the meeting we had this morning with Joe DeWitt-Foy, who is a member of the Bikes, Heights Bike Coalition, he gave us updates on several initiatives in the city, and we're looking forward to seeing those results as the initiatives are completed, because that will mean that there will be more safety improvements in Cleveland Heights in twenty twenty-five for pedestrians and for bicyclists. Adam Fleischer was also at the meeting, the owner of the Wine Spot, and gave us very important information concerning recycling for businesses, including the fact that he's interviewed many business owners who are putting their recyclables in the trash, so we're sending far more to the, the, um, dump than we need to. So those are items that I will be following up on with the committee. The next Municipal Services meeting is November eighteenth at ten AM. The next Municipal Services meeting is November 18th at 10:00 a.m., and I'm trying to schedule a finance committee meeting to finalize the scope of work for data analysis of mortgage and home repair lending in African-American neighborhoods. We're looking at the data that we could collect that would indicate how the banks are serving our neighbors, and to discuss current bank lending programs available to prospective borrowers in those same neighborhoods for home mortgages and for home improvement. Thank you, President.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports? Councilman Cobb?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna be holding an administrative services committee meeting, uh, next Monday, October 28th. Uh, we're gonna have an executive session at 5:15, uh, to discuss some, uh, possible appointments, and then at 6 o'clock, uh, we have invited all of the chairpersons of our various boards, committees, and commissions, uh, we have invited them to come to the meeting to sort of check in with council, to share, uh, with us any concerns, needs, or issues that they have, and the purpose of this meeting is to, for us to get, gather some information to try and find out how we can do, um, a, a better job of, uh, serving them and, and meeting their needs, and also hopefully the public will become a little educated about, um, these boards, committees, and commissions as well.
All right, uh, Vice President Russell?
Uh, yes, just want everyone to know, no, Wednesday, November 6th, we'll have a Dog Park public hearing. Uh, we will have, uh, veterinarian, uh, Dr. Scott here, as well as, uh, visitors from, uh, surrounding communities, where we will get updates and, uh, ideals on where and what to amenities to put into a Cleveland Heights Dog Park. And we will start to have a, um, planning and development, uh, after, sometime after the election, but that will be scheduled, and we will let you know. Dog Park, Wednesday, November 6th, 6 o'clock. And if you have any questions for, uh, the veterinarian, Dr. Scott, please make sure you send, uh, those questions to Addie, uh, I've already sent him a list, about 15.
Okay, uh, any other committee reports? Let's move on to old business, new business. Councilmember comments. Councilwoman Larson?
To the Thomas family, I am very sorry for your loss. Had I known when the funeral occurred, I would have been there, because I'm a member of that neighborhood. Um, I also appreciate the information that we, you shared with us this evening, and I do believe that will be council and the, the citizens of the city, and the family especially, will be receiving more information in the very near future.
Any other? Oh, Councilman Petrus?
As painful as it is, I am very grateful to everyone who came, came and spoke this evening. I cannot imagine, uh, how painful this is for you all, um, but I do look forward to this council at the earliest possible convenience, uh, receiving all information that the law department can share with us. Uh, it's important that we know everything that's publicly available. Thank you.
Councilman Cobb?
Uh, I too, um, and this is, uh, better late than never, I guess, share my condolences as well. I think I'm, and I'll speak for, I think maybe the majority of council, we had, um, no idea that, um, information had not been conveyed to the family. Um, it's not a, a case where city council has any more information, um, than the family members that the members of council are withholding. Uh, I have, um, confidence that, uh, when the city completes its investigation, and the Bureau of, uh, Criminal Investigation completes its investigation, that there will be full transparency from the, uh, city government, um, and that, that, what, whatever the outcome is, that this council will, um, will do what we need to do to make sure that any reforms that the police department needs, uh, will be implemented, and I think that's a commitment that all of us, uh, would make tonight to the family. And, uh, it's, it's a tragedy, uh, it's the first shooting since I've been on this city council for a few years that we've had, and, um, I, I hope it's the last one that this city has.
Councilman Maddox?
I wanna thank the public for coming out tonight, um, and expressing their thoughts, their emotions, their feelings about the processes, about questions that they have, and I wanna assure them that the members of this council absolutely, uh, agree with them. It, it is a very difficult thing to bury a young person, um, to, to watch a young person, um, miss out on all the opportunities that you had planned for them. Uh, transparently, I'm not just a council person, but I'm a pastor, a pastor in East Cleveland, one of the hardest cities in this state. I have lost track of the amount of young people that I have buried, um, some that I know personally, some that I do not. My life changed in October 2017, uh, when a 17-year-old boy named Steven Swain died in my own arms after being shot in the face three times. He's the last person he spoke to and the last person that he saw. I have never, uh, been able to recover and be the same man that I was prior to that. It is a very difficult thing to see a gifted, talented young man, um, lose a future under any circumstances, and so I want the residents in this family to know that I absolutely, I wanna do everything in my power to make sure that you get the information that you can, and that the community and the city continues to work with you, um, but I do wanna give you my condolences and let you know sincerely, um, it's unfortunate that I can say this, but I absolutely understand. Um, I, I, I can't fathom what the family experienced that night who witnessed that, but I can tell you just based on my own personal experiences, that it's something that I see every time I close my eyes at night, and I have since 2017, and so, not only do I want you to know that I, you have our support, um, but you also have our prayers, uh, because once the crowd leaves and the voices go away, you are still left with grief, you are still left with that pain, that hole, and that gap. Um, Christian was an amazing young man, I have two sons who are in the Cleveland Heights School District now, um, two older children who graduated, and I grew up on Rushly, just one street over from Yellowstone, um, just a couple houses away from Hartwood, raised my children there, so I, I understand how close the community is there, and, uh, their passion. I went to Oxford, I went to Monticello, and I went to Heights, and I understand it, it's not just neighbors, but their family there. Um, I was just at my parents' house at 9:85 Rushly, uh, two days ago, just walking the street and thinking about how much has changed, and I want you to know that, um, my entire family is praying for your family, my entire family, um, is thinking about you and lifting you up, but you're not alone in this season, and I, I pray that as we go through this process, the information comes out to bring about understanding and peace, and a level of comfort that I know you cannot give or get any other way. Um, but I just wanted to assure this family that I do understand, um, and it is a hard place to have to hold on to that grief, um, much longer than people understand, and I pray for everyone who was there that night, uh, who experienced that, who had to witness that, because again, it's something that I know that I will have to live with for the rest of my life, there are just some traumas that you just have to find a way to work through and continue to find a way to live, and so, I just wanted to say that tonight. Thank you.
Vice President Russell?
Uh, as I said, you all have my sincere condolences, and I wanted to make it very clear, and copying off of Mr. Cops, Councilman Cops, we had no idea of the information you just told us here tonight, we were totally in the dark, and, you know, it's a lot of things we have to deal with of being African-American families, and a lot of things that we have to endure. I mean, I helped march around this city with George Floyd, I was in parks and, and rallies around a lot of African-American people who have been killed and shot, and I support the police, my brother is a police officer, but you're right, when things are not right, we need to call it out, and we need to look into it. Not saying that what's wrong or what's right, but we need to make sure we have an investigation that is clear and transparent, that everyone knows what happened and what didn't happen. And I want to make sure that you understand from the bottom of my heart, I am with you, I support you, and I pray that all of you, all of you, have peace in your hearts, that the city, council, and all of us will come together to do the right thing for your family. Thank you.
All right, thank you, council. Now we move on to the president's report. I, uh, I worked on this really long president's report today, which I'm not going to read, and you would not wanna hear. When I was coming into the chambers, uh, saw a student of mine out in the hallway, and he introduced me to his sister, former student, I taught at Shaker, I'm a Heights High grad, but I did teach at Shaker, and, um, he didn't even mention that this was his brother, I think he was just too grief-stricken to, you know, we hadn't seen each other in a while, and he, he didn't wanna, I don't know, I just don't think he wanted to burden me with it right there, um, but, uh, I, um, wanna get together with him, and I get to know Christian, because, um, I have so much affection for Farrell, and had no idea this was his brother until actually what happened in here, and, uh, I think the least I can do is just get to know him, get to know Christian, um, and so that's what I plan on doing to honor his life, and, um, I thank you all for coming and speaking from your hearts tonight. Um, this meeting is adjourned.